Afternoon. Let me call to order the April 23 meeting of the Concord Select Board. First order of business is an update from the town manager. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to start off with sort of a reminder about social distancing and, you know, people kind of trying to, reminding people to just be on their best behavior and be respectful of others during this pandemic. You know, we continue to get reports of, you know, sometimes two, a crowd, trails being a little too crowded, people congregating in areas where, you know, it's not okay to congregate. And I know I also get lots of correspondence people who think that, you know, things should be reopened because it's not them that's doing the bad behavior. But we get enough reports of it that it is really concerning and we talk almost daily about, are we doing enough? Do we need to impose more restrictions? As I've said many times, we really don't want to, but we want to. I think we have a good balance right now. And I know that the, our emergency management director, fire chief Tom Judge, county's chief Joe O'Connor agree that we're kind of, we've kind of got it balanced right, but it is going to rely on others, you know, doing what they need to do. You know, municipal, I know it's been reported that some municipalities in Massachusetts are mandating face masks. That's not, we've gotten guidance from the attorney general that we cannot mandate that. So we are reminding people again, if you're going to be outside, wear a mask. Even if you feel like you're maintaining six to 10 feet, why take the chance? You know, and, you know, and I think we haven't put out a mandate that people have their dogs on leashes, but it is, it is something that people can do for themselves that is a courtesy for others. Just today it was about bikes on trails. If you're riding a bike on a trail and there are people walking, even though on trails bikes don't have to yield to pedestrians like they do on the street, it would be a courteous thing to do. You know, this is, I know it seems like it's, we keep saying it's temporary and the longer we're in it, the more permanent it feels, but it will pass. And so let's just, you know, do the things we need to do in this time now to, you know, be more considerate of each other. And that's how we can do our part to prevent this from getting any worse. And so, and I, I feel like I am turning into a bit of a broken record on this, but it, the redundancy of the complaints and correspondence that I get about things happening in town really required me to continue to mention this. So, and honestly, I want to thank all the people who are already proactively doing the social distancing, who are staying home except for essential errands and, you know, getting a bit of fresh air during the day. And, you know, those are the people that are really, that make the community proud and are going to help us get through this. And so it's just really those who aren't doing it that I'm trying to reach out to. So I won't dwell on that any further. So a couple of things, the governor announced two days ago that schools are closed for the remainder of the school year, as well as childcare centers who are not doing childcare for emergency responders and healthcare workers. So I was on a conference call with Lieutenant Governor shortly after that announcement, and she said that there would be additional guidance coming on summer camps. I know we're, we're in the process of planning for having our summer camps open. I know the schools do summer programs as well. So we're kind of waiting anxiously for the additional guidance on summer camps, but just, we're going to keep planning as if we're going to have camps open. And then we'll continue to evaluate that situation, but the state will probably be issuing more guidance here in the coming days. Today, the middle school building committee met and they identified a, I don't want to call it a preferred option, but they identified an option that from both an educational program and cost standpoint, seemed to be the one that was kind of rising to the top of the four options that they had from the design team. And so they formally asked the design team to focus on that option. And I'm going to share my screen here just to show you what that looks like. So if we can see that it's, and it's, yeah, so I'll go through this a little bit here. So this just shows that this option evolving from February to March to April. There's, there are a couple, there are two different cost estimates, and I don't want to get into the numbers because to be honest with you, the building committees spend a lot of time talking about the numbers. And there's pretty significant differences between two estimates and how those estimates compare to other projects that are, in other parts of the Commonwealth. So I'd rather sort out those, those estimates, start throwing numbers around. But as you can see, this has, it's kind of a linear pattern. Sorry.
So Stephen, is that all on one plane or is this stacked?
I believe it is a ground level. I think it's all on one level.
Okay, that's it.
And you can see where it would sit on the site there. So I'm not, I'm not the designer, so I really couldn't go into the details of the design, but I just wanted to show everybody what that looked like. This information was posted.
Can you hold that screen there for a second?
Yep. Yes, if you look, if you look at the guide, the legend on the right, on my right anyway, you can see some of the space assignments. But I just want to remind folks that this is a feasibility study level of design. And so these are just based with some square footage needs attached to it. It's not, it's not the design of a building. So the other aspect to this, is that very good with this?
Yeah, thanks.
So the other aspect to this is, you know, the committee, I know the committee members are thinking about, you know, where things stand in light of the pandemic and the economic fallout that I think we're, that, that's being felt widely. And so they are continuing to work on the feasibility study because that is a kind of a distinct set of work. It's kind of like this pandemic hit when the committee was in basically mid-sentence on feasibility, on the feasibility study. And so what they're trying to do is just finish the sentence and get to the end of feasibility, you know, so we can complete that work. But I know the committee is going to be talking in the coming weeks about what the status of the project is, what's the right pace should we be moving forward, what's the economic impact? So for those who are wondering, you know, is the committee, you know, why are they, why are they doing this work? It's, they want to finish some things that had been started, but the committee is mindful of this, of the times we're in and will be talking about what their recommended approach is going to be. So a couple of good news things, we have two firefighters, Justin Warren and Jesse Kaney, who will be graduating from the firefighter, Mass Firefighters Academy. Unfortunately, there won't be a ceremony, but they'll be, they're graduating and they'll be coming here to work at the department. And I'm pleased to report that both police and fire are at full strength right now. Thank goodness. Hope that stays true. They, you know, I want to, I want to commend Chief Judge and Chief O'Connor. They both have really just specific and precise operating measures now that I think have really greatly helped keep their department safe. So then there's a note on the website. I think a news and notes just went out about today about water main flushing and hydrant, sorry, hydrant flushing. That's going to begin on Monday and it's going to be nine to three, Monday through Thursday. And then Monday through Wednesday, May 5th through the 6th. So check out CPW's website. Actually, there's a page, ma.gov/flushing. That's about hydrant flushing, not other kinds of flushing. So if people have questions, they can also reach out to the water department at CPW. And then this week is National Library Week from the 19th to the 25th. And Concord Free Public Library is having interviews with local authors, Josh Funk and Greg McGuire on their social media channels. And they continue to offer virtual programs for all ages. So people should go to the, go to the library's website, sign up their electronic newsletter and get some information about how the library can, they can participate in virtual programs. Even though the building is physically closed, many of the library staff are continuing to work and really creating some really innovative stuff to stay vital and help really kind of people manage the anxiety, stress, boredom, whatever you want to call it of the time. So Kerry Cronin is doing a good job of keeping that going. And then there's a, an announcement on the Concord Police about phishing scams, cyber scams. So it's, you know, people are taking advantage of this time where people are, seem to be on their computers a lot even more than normal. You know, I would, I would refer, I'm not going to go through the advisory, but just go check it out. There are specific types of phishing scams that they've identified. And as always, don't open emails from people you don't know. And that's basic. Oh, and actually I did have a, a social hour with, via Zoom with town staff yesterday afternoon. And I had never done anything like that. I'd never managed a webinar. So it was a little bumpy at times, but it was a lot of fun. I did express at the outset, the board's gratitude for their work as well as my own. And I'm, I'm pleased that we got, we were up to at one point about 80 participants. And after an hour and 15, 15 minutes, when we finally decided to sign off, there were still, I think, 70 plus on there. So people came on and, you know, they would raise their virtual hand and we kind of chit chat a little bit. And I got a lot of positive feedback on it and people, I think, want to do another one. So I just wanted to share, they, everybody sounded pretty good and they're managing and thanks. And they, they also wanted to thank the board for the support and for the opportunity to continue to work. So that's it for me.
Are there any questions for the town manager?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. That sounds great about yesterday checking in with the employees in that way. That was great. Are there, besides what you've already mentioned, are there any general categories of resident concerns or employee concerns rising to the top?
No, I think, I think what I hear most of all is, like I said, it ranges from people thinking we should reopen the tennis courts, which we closed because we were receiving reports from neighbors that people were not observing social distancing guidelines. And like I said, and it can be transmitted on tennis ball. And that's really kind of a good example that I keep coming back to because we get reports from people who see other people not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And then we also get requests from people to allow the, for us to allow them to do more. And like I said, we're trying to balance it, you know, it's, that's the, whether it's, like I said, bikes on trails, dogs on leashes, cars at trailhead parking lots. I mean, you can, you know, we've been through kind of the list of them. It stays very, very consistent.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted.
I just wanted to follow up on what Stephen said about people on trails. And I believe there's something on the police department website, but I know that the Trails Committee has discussed this. And my recollection is that pedestrians have the right of way over wheel, over bicycles. So the bicycle, the onus is on the bicycle riders to yield to pedestrians. But you can verify that on the police department website where there's a code of conduct for, for that.
Yeah, there is, there is a bicyclist code of conduct and people should check that out as a reminder. But, you know, I think what we're asking here is just, you know, go the extra mile. You know, be, you know, be, you know, as a kid, I remember like, I was told many times, be kinder than is necessary.
I just wanted to, you know, in seconding Susan's comment and also adding that I think one of the concerns I've, I have had both biking on trails and walking on trails is that, you know, if you're too abreast on any trail, most likely you're not practicing good social distancing. So there should always be room for somebody to pass. If there's, you know, if there isn't, it either means there's a traffic, a traffic congestion issue on either, you know, back and forth. Or it means people aren't being very smart about their own social distancing. And, and I think that's, you know, we're all trying. And I think that it's hard for everybody to continue to practice it. The weather's nice. And for many people, Corona has not gotten personal yet. I did want, as, as a, as someone who has been very actively involved in my mother-in-law's care, especially this week, and we've been impacted by the, you know, by what it means when you can't use any care facilities, when you can't use a rehab facility because they're not safe. I'm also aware that, you know, anybody in Concord that doesn't think it's affecting Concord is not looking very hard. Because I know we have cases in many places. And again, if somebody doesn't know of somebody, it probably means they haven't really, they haven't looked very far. I think it's probably hitting all of us about now. Thanks.
Kerry?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One of the things I've been wondering about is the library. I think, I'm not sure about this, but I think before the pandemic, the library had a service to drive the books to people who weren't mobile and couldn't get out of their house. Is that, is that right? They have something like that?
I mean, we may have. I don't recall that.
Yeah, because I've just been wondering about people, you know, some elderly people who really like to read and they, they're not really up on the technology of Kindle or anything. So whether there's some way that the library can do some kind of delivery of books? I've just sort of been wondering about it.
Well, I mean, it's, it wouldn't be an essential service.
Yeah.
And we did talk about that early on. And because it can be transmitted on surfaces and maybe the guidance on that's getting a little clearer, but when we made the decision at the beginning, we were concerned about surface transmission. I mean, I think we want to do the best we can to help people out, but there is a risk in doing that. And so that's something that, you know, if people have individual needs, they should certainly reach out to either the library or to me. But I'd rather try and see if we could come up with solutions, individual solutions versus incurring that risk for an entire department.
Okay. And, okay, that's good. So if people have individual needs, they can contact you or the library. Okay, my other question is, we're, we're getting, in the next couple of months, we're going to hopefully have town meeting. And so I think some of the board committees are asking when they're going to be able to meet by Zoom. Because they, I think a lot of them were in mid-sentence, as you put it. And we thought this was going to last two weeks, maybe four weeks. So anyway, I'm wondering if we can look again at that policy and think about how to open it up for the non-essential board who are going to need to prepare for town meeting.
Sure. I think now that we have town meeting sort of set, so to speak, projected anyway, I think we can, we can start to project boards and committees. I think it, I still, the big, it's two things. The first is the electronic resources and making sure that, you know, our, the folks in, in my office, Chris and Jeremy who are on the call as well, and a few others, have become really good at doing this Zoom thing and helping boards and committees do the remote meetings while making sure that we are complying with the open meeting law. Minute Man Media Network has done a good job of taking the recordings and posting them. Like it's, the system we have is working well, but it still requires the efforts of those people. And so staff resources and everybody's, by and large, working remotely. So staff resources to manage the meetings and then any individual staff who support those boards and committees, you know, their time and energy and also them being remote, like what's it take for them to support those boards and committees? So I think the thing I just need to say is, you know, everybody's lives have been impacted by this. And I think that what people need to remember is everybody else's lives have been impacted by this too. And so the expectations that people had before COVID-19 just need to be managed. But, so I, so I don't, I guess the point of all that is, you know, it limits our ability to just say yes to on-demand, you know, board committee meetings just because they want to get together and talk. We've tried to focus, the point of the policy was to make sure if we're going to invest the resources, it was for something purposeful. Like there are non-regulatory boards and committees who are on grant deadlines or have vendor contracts, like the middle school building committee, for example. And so they said, can we go ahead with our meeting because we've got this need? And so I think if board committees have that and they've got something specific they need, we can certainly try and set something up for them. But I did say last week, we are going to continue to evaluate that. And I do know people want to start getting together and talking and meeting. And like I said, now we've got the virtual meeting thing going pretty good. I think it's, we're more efficient at it. So, but I do want to make sure it's not just tying up space and time just for a social call. It really should be something that is meaningful for the agenda.
Are there any other questions for the town manager? All right, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Earth Day 50th Anniversary Proclamation, which was included in your, I think we should see if we can get this posted on the town website. And I would certainly, with, there's no objection, entertain a motion to approve this proclamation. Linda, would you mind reading the motion?
Move to proclaim April 19th through 25th, 2020, to be Earth Week in Concord, Massachusetts, and urge all residents to reflect on how to contribute to a healthy, sustainable environment and take action to make Concord an even better place to live, work, and raise a family.
And there's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Jeremy, I'll ask you to make sure that this gets in the hands of our public information officer and gets posted on the town's website. The next item on our agenda is approve a 30-day extension for the tour guide licenses. I think the obvious reason for that, we all know. So if there's no objection, I would ask Linda if she would read the motion.
So before I read the motion, I'm assuming we need to take a roll call on this particular item?
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Yes, we do.
I would say so.
Okay, I'll read the motion. Move to approve a 60-day extension for tour guide license set to expire on May 31st, 2020, with the new expiration date being July 31st, 2020.
A second.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hockes?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
Thank you. I note that the passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a moderator's declaration. Have him moderate.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, on April 15th, I issued the Declaration of Recess and Continuance of Concord's annual town meeting. And this is, that, that declaration is posted on the website already. And this is an iterative process because although the select board has indicated under section nine of chapter 39 that we'd like to move the town meeting all the way to June 22nd. As the moderator, I can do that under 10A only at, in 30-day increments. So the first 30-day increment moves the meeting to May 29th at 7:00 PM at the high school. And I fully expect that sometime before May 29th, there'll be an additional declaration that will move the meeting to June 22nd. Now, whether there will be necessary to have another recess and continuance on that, I think we simply can't know at this point. But certainly our hope is that we'll be able to have some manner of meeting on June 22nd. And we have been working on backing up the calendar from there with respect to what the finance committee needs to do in order to do the usual preparations for town meeting. And there, there does need to be a lot more discussion about exactly what the parameters might be for protection of public health and safety to hold a town meeting. And that's in development and under discussion. And as the data changes and as more possibilities come to us, we'll be working on that.
Does anyone have questions for the moderator?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I did want to just weigh in on this. I was on a call today with the Division of Local Services and I just wanted to just touch base because the interplay between when we have town meeting and how we will continue to run the operation, I think is important. As you, as you know, the legislature did enact a law, a bill that was signed by the governor that gives the town authority to continue to fund operations on a 1/12th operating budget based on the current year. And so if we, if we don't have our budget approved by June 30th, and that is in case this, we just don't have the ability to have large gatherings under the governor's order in case, basically in case a state emergency persists through June 30th. The other thing is normally free cash would expire on June 30th for FY20 free cash. But the, they did, the legislation allows us to carry that forward as a revenue source for FY21. So I just want the board to know and the community that if we don't have it by June 30th and don't approve the budget, that doesn't mean we turn the lights off. We still can continue with most operations. And I forgot to mention this in my update, but Chief Financial Officer Kerry LaFleur has, has, and her team have been doing some analysis of our current operating budget. And right now, I think we'll be, it looks like we're going to be okay. The deadline for the, for the most, for the most recent quarter for taxes is May 1st. That's the, sorry, the fourth quarter property tax deadline is May 1st. And so after we pass that deadline, we'll do an analysis of how, you know, what was the pay rate? What was the, you know, how many, what was the loss in revenue? How many, how many individual accounts weren't able to pay their bill? And, you know, assess basically what does that mean for revenue going forward? So these are all questions that are directly tied to what we would need to do at town meeting. There was discussion on, you know, should people be, if we're only operating on a 1/12th budget, should we be looking at, you know, deferring pay-go capital and things like that? So these are all open-ended questions that, that do relate to when town meeting actually happens.
Thank you. Other, other questions or comments for the moderator? Kerry?
Carmen, I was, you said you're working with people on public health and public safety measures that might have to be taken at a public gathering. Just curious who you're working with?
Well, it would be town, public safety folks, and that would include the police chief, the fire chief, and the director of public health, and the town manager. In addition, the Mass Moderators Association has approached the State Board of Public Health and requested that some more in-depth guidelines be provided for communities statewide on what parameters we ought to be thinking about and in what circumstances. It's, you know, it's unclear whether every community will be in the same circumstance. There may be some differences among communities, say, for example, between eastern Massachusetts and western Massachusetts. Maybe easier in some places than in others. But that conversation is underway. And I'm, I'm also aware of various approaches that are under discussion in a number of other towns. So that, that gives us a lot of ideas to work with. And I would regard this question as a collaborative question for myself and the board, the select board that is, and, and town management to work through to find an approach to having town meeting that we all agree is safe, comfortable, that we all agree is safe, comfortable, and still allows us to do the business of town meeting. And again, if we're still under a stay-at-home order and we're still under uh, a town-declared emergency and a state-declared emergency as of June twenty-second, clearly we're not going to be able to have town meeting. So it, there's so much wait and see here.
Great, thanks a lot.
Mike, can I? Mike, may I say?
Yes, please.
Um, Carmen, you know, we were speaking earlier about um, you know, some committees feeling uh, as though they worried about getting prepared for town meeting. Are you getting a lot of concerns about that at this point?
Well, the finance committee is certainly very ready to resume its conversations. Uh, they want to uh, be uh, revisiting their guidelines in light of what the uh, current circum- current economic circumstances are. And as Mike mentioned, um, or actually, I, I guess as Stephen mentioned, the um, uh, you should know more about the revenues after the May first uh, tax deadline. And I don't know what else we'll know entirely about, for example, how many people are out of work in Concord, et cetera. But uh, the finance committee wants to finish its two hearings. Uh, they want to gather to discuss their recommendations. And uh, and of course, before we have a town meeting, they would publish their uh, finance committee report as is customary. So they're eager to get going and uh, uh, and uh, I, I know the town manager is aware of that. And we've had some conversation already about what the appropriate timetable is for the finance committee to get back in business.
Thank you. And I guess it would, you know, we're somewhat caught because there's still so many unknowns that we're dealing with. So to, you know, prematurely, um, you know, start looking at all these things, you know, is problematic right now, I think.
Yes, we don't even know whether we have the chicken or the egg.
Yep.
Uh, just following up on the remark that Stephen made. I've been in contact with Stephen earlier about at our next meeting, um, having Carrie LaFleur join him to give us a financial update. And Stephen, I wonder if we might push that out one week so we would clear the May first deadline and she might have a better handle? Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I, I don't think anything will change between now and, and then. Um, and, you know, it's a week from today is um, would be the thirtieth. So maybe the following Monday or something like that.
Um, the following Thursday, if we continue our meeting pattern.
Sure. Uh, yeah, I mean, there may be something we need, may need to be known next week. E- every day it changes. But yeah, no, I do think we, we, we're best served wait until after May first to have a more detailed discussion about the finances. And, you know, I do, I do know the finance committee doesn't want to get back to, to business. But I think boards and committees, like I said, need to, need to temper their expectations of what, what normal business is, or really should be like the governor's order suggests, essential business. And I know the public hearings are essential for the finance committee. We're going to facilitate those, but um, other types of meetings may need to be looked at a little differently.
Well, uh, thank you, Carmen, for coming and bringing us up to date. And I know you've been uh, examining lots of alternatives and processes associated with whatever town meeting we have. So it's greatly appreciated and we'll look forward to hearing from you again, as we get closer to either having another, a meeting or the need to postpone it yet again. So thanks very much. And the next item on our agenda is committee appointments. Linda?
I'm showing no committee appointments here. Didn't we do that last time?
No, we nominated uh, Mr. Kerry.
Carrie, yeah.
This week.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll read it. Move to appoint Ramon Carrion of Twenty-four Walden Street to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Second for that. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And again, do we need a roll call on, on that?
Uh, why don't we do it just to be?
Just in case, yeah.
So call the roll, please.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. All right, thank you. And the last item is miscellaneous correspondence we continue to receive, as does the town manager, I suppose, town moderator. Uh, lots of correspondence. Um, we had posted a bunch from last time. I did that to make sure the community had a sense of the communications we're receiving. Uh, and at uh, an executive session meeting that we had last Thursday, I was authorized to prepare in consultation with uh, uh, town council, I mean, materials, a statement regarding the issue at Duster Brook Woods. And I distributed that to you earlier today. I don't intend to read that now, but I would uh, very much appreciate a motion to uh, authorize the chair to have that posted on the town website and also submitted to the Concord Journal.
Does no move?
And is there a second?
Second.
I suppose we'll do a roll call vote since Linda's getting very good at that.
Question? Um, Mike, did you get my email this afternoon?
Yes, I, there, Ms. Ackerman wrote back to me with, and so did Susan, typo. So I fixed.
Thank you.
Verbo, I think it probably.
Verbal, yeah.
So yes, I fixed it. So Ms. Escobedo?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Um, myself, Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. I'll get the statement to Jeremy and see when he gets it posted and transmitted to the Concord Journal. Are there any other items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have a question. Um, are we going to schedule a meeting for next Thursday?
Yeah, I think for the time being, let's just set that as our regular practice. Um, we're starting to get some more routine business that we need to deal with. But uh, so, and we've got, you know, we've got town finances coming up and we don't know what the state of these emergency declarations are going to be. So I think for the foreseeable future, we just plan to meet at four o'clock on Thursdays and
Thank you.
Take it one week at a time.
I, I have a question also. Um, Mike, I really appreciate that you um, asked us if we had any other items to add to the agenda and um, that you were giving us a heads up sometimes about what was coming up. Um, so I'm just sort of looking forward a little bit about some of the items that we were working on before all of this happened. Like, I don't remember all of them right now, but I do remember, you know, taking position on articles. I remember we had the town manager evaluation. We had a number of things pending. Um, so I'm glad to hear you say that we might be starting to get back to some of this routine business. Um, I like the idea of meeting every week so we can start to catch up. Is, is that kind of what you have in mind, that we can start working on some of those?
I think what I, what I will do is I'll go back, go back to my records and see if I can generate a list of those items that we sort of got put on hold as we're trying to deal with this kind of. So I don't, at this time, I would encourage us to re-engage warrant articles. I think I'd want to wait till we get a little bit closer to understanding what town meeting is going to look like before we do that. Again, it's not only uh, for that reason, but, you know, the public isn't really, I mean, we're broadcasting and all of this, but there's not as much public involvement. And I'd want to see if we could get a little bit more of that. But I'll try to put together a list and get it yesterday.
I was just going to say, I want to make sure that um, finalizing the transportation committee and starting to populate it um, would be up there because um, many of the conversations we're having affect bicyclists, pedestrians, and um, I've certainly gotten a lot of uh, emails and inquiries.
Okay. So I thought the general uh, statement to all of you is if there are items that you, that you have been working on or we've been working on, that you want to get moving along, let's get them into me and I'll start generating a list and see if we can get some priorities set up and start tackling some of this stuff. All right. Any other comments or questions? And I think we're ready to have a vote on adjournment. Linda, were you going to call a roll for the last time this evening?
Move to adjourn. And so, um, Ms. Ackerman?
I think you took it. Right?
Right, we needed a second. Thanks, Jane. Um, and Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Stay well. We'll see you very soon, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.